This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Leominster, locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
And a series of different vulnerabilities will be created on that network. So we're here today to inform the city that there's some serious vulnerabilities that will be in place if the city doesn't replace all their Windows 7 computers and their servers that are operating on server 2008.
Okay, which include what segments of the municipality?
There's 172 computers and I don't have the exact number on servers.
That would be all departments, all buildings. That's City Hall, Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, that's Veterans, that's Senior Center, every department that the city has.
So with that being said, is the School Department addressing this from a different angle or is this not applicable to them?
So we don't service the School Department, so I honestly can't speak to that. I would certainly hope they are, but I don't have that information for you.
Where was the recent breach we had? Was that through the School Department?
It was, yes.
So I would imagine they are addressing it.
I hope so.
Okay, so what is your role, sir, for the city of Leominster?
We're the IT vendor.
Right, over here?
Yep, my name is Chris. I'm the Systems Administrator and the Account Manager for the city.
So you work for, with the company, for the city?
I do, yep. I'm from ClearCom. I work for the city, but I oversee these kinds of projects and stuff as well.
All right, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'm gonna yield the floor to the Finance Committee first because this is before them. If you want to begin, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the library included as well in that list of departments?
Yes, they are.
So there'll be, all these departments will be deploying new computers, but there are server upgrades too, correct?
Correct, yes.
And you know specifically where the servers are being upgraded?
That would be the DPW, the library, and the recreation.
Okay. And do you have a breakdown on these? I mean, I guess the total cost of this item is, it looks like it's $308,000. Do you have a breakdown for us as to how that number gets arrived at?
Yeah, so we do have a quote from HP for the computers. I think there's a separate quote that's also for the servers, so it's broken out into kind of two different, you know, numbers. I know there's 172 computers, you know, covered in that quote. I know there's one server at the recreation, there's two servers at the library, and there's also two servers that would be going in at DPW as well.
Are all those pieces of equipment purchased off a state list? Is that how that?
Yes, I think because of the deadline, it would have to be, yes.
Okay. And how much of that $308,000, if any, is for you guys to deploy the equipment?
Right now, we're covered under a contract, an annual contract, and at the end of the year, if we go over the number of hours that's allotted in the contract, there may be some additional billing, but as of right now, there won't be any additional labor cost to the deployment of the equipment as it's covered under our contract. However, we are very close to nearing the cap in the number of hours in the contract.
So at this point, you really can't forecast whether you're gonna be able to deploy this equipment within that cap or whether you're gonna exceed it?
Well, there's still, you know, seven, eight months left of the contract, and the contract is July through June. Right now, in the contract, there is an allotted amount of hours of approximately 1,200 or 1,300 hours of labor that's built into the contract. I'd have to look and see where we're at, but realistically, to deploy the servers plus 172 workstations, we're looking at about 700 man-hours of, you know, labor, and we have to do that in approximately 12 weeks. So there will be 60 to 70 hours per week in the deployment process.
So just to take us through the timeline, if this gets passed this evening and you're authorized to purchase this equipment, when would you expect to get the equipment? Would you have any idea?
It's being purchased from HP Direct because it has to be on the state list, but I would guess that they're, you know, depending on what their, you know, turnaround time is for this order, I would guess that it's probably gonna be a few weeks to a month before we can even get the equipment in. So I mean, it's gonna be a very tight timeline.
So assuming that this got passed and we were authorized to purchase the equipment, it's the 15th of October, safe to say we might have it by before Thanksgiving, the actual equipment. Then all of that stuff gets, has to get deployed between November 15th and January 14th?
Correct, yes.
That's doable?
Yeah, that's why it's approximately, if we broke it down to about 12 weeks of time, you know, between the month of November, month of December, and a few weeks in January, we realistically have to install approximately 20 to 25 computers per week.
So we're sort of at, we're up against the wall.
It needs to, a decision needs to be made very, very quickly.
And just to sort of reemphasize, if this doesn't happen, literally all of the data on these servers and computers isn't protected, subject to all kinds of bad things?
Yeah, I mean, I can say that, you know, they, Microsoft releases patches every single month, so, you know, there is a patch currently that they know is a vulnerability, but they patch it every month. So as soon as that patch stops getting released, people know what to attack. I mean, it's gonna be a known vulnerability.
So it's not theoretical, it's real?
No, it's real, yes, absolutely, for sure.
And I'm guessing, I mean, these old computers, right? I mean, so I'm guessing that especially with the servers, there's problems in terms of operating this stuff now. I mean, I know from being a library trustee along with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, that we've got issues at the library currently with the equipment, the way it's configured. So not only is this gonna protect us against these real attacks, but also it's gonna address some of the vulnerabilities built into the fact that the equipment's old, right?
For sure, yeah. I mean, the equipment's already overdue for replacement. I know specifically at the library, there is some, you know, situations where they wanna deploy, you know, different softwares or support, different systems that they already have in place, but they can't do that now because they don't have the appropriate equipment to do so.
Just to take the urgency of this one more step, and not to overemphasize the library, but if there was an attack that involved that equipment, that equipment runs the entire building, right? So, I mean, you could literally shut this building down, right?
Yes.
Depending on what kind of a vulnerability or attack it was, right?
Yeah, I mean, if ransomware made its way into any building, it could hold every file that the city has for ransom, realistically.
So you're talking HVAC systems?
Yes.
Lighting systems, all the security systems, all the things that are run by the server?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'll check with Counselor Cormier, the other member of my committee present.
I'm all set for the moment, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Turn it back to the Counselor. You're welcome. I'll yield the floor, begin with Counselor Frida. Counselor Dubrowski?
No, I'm good.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, so you are deploying new hardware and software, replacing desktop computers?
Correct, yeah. So the Windows 10 would come on the new hardware.
Okay.
So that software license would be included in the hardware purchase.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Feckley?
Yeah, so because this is an emergency preamble and we have to vote on it as such, why are we up against the wall? Why is it such an emergency? I mean, I understand it's because of the deadline, but why are we finding out now that we only have this much time to get this done?
Yeah, I think, you know, in my opinion, I think Microsoft does make their own rules sometimes that puts us all in a tough situation. You know, at this point, they did announce, you know, the end of life. You know, this is a process that we've been, you know, going through and bringing up and trying to accomplish for, you know, for quite some time, but it's come to this point where we can't wait any longer. You know, we're at the point where it has to be done. You know, if it's not done by that January date, then, you know, there has to be some type of, you know, waiver of liability or something like that that, you know, would have to happen.
Okay, so Microsoft didn't give us too much of a, or anybody, I guess, too much of a heads up?
I think also the city's done a great job at replacing computers over time, and Microsoft in the past has extended their software security patching.
Ability, okay.
So when they had Windows XP, they extended it and they kept on extending it to give people a little bit more time. And Microsoft announced in May of this past year, they will not be extending it, and you basically have until January 14th to eliminate that operating system out of the, out of your infrastructure, or else there's gonna be a security, you know, concern.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, you referenced the patch. For the public, can you just explain what that means?
I'm referring to the patch.
Yeah, how Microsoft deploys a patch.
Yeah, so it's an exploit, so they basically patch a vulnerability that they know about every month. I mean, the security patches, I'm talking about one in particular, but they have, you know, several patches that they patch every single month, and the majority of those are security patches. So, you know, when that deadline comes and those patches stop, you know, that's when you're really vulnerable after that date for those ransomware attacks, the, you know, the exploits that, I guess my point is that they kind of already know about them, but they're not gonna patch them after that date. That's when it really, really becomes a threat.
Okay. Is this more of a problem for older hardware, where Microsoft is not gonna be able to protect it any longer? And if it is, once we upgrade the hardware with the new computers and the server and everything, is that gonna be a good piece, a good prevention piece for the future or the near future, or we're gonna have to deal with this again next year?
Definitely won't have to deal with it again next year, but I think that, you know, it's hard to say what Microsoft decisions are, you know what I mean? I wish I had insight to that as far as how long they're gonna allow Windows 10 to stay up to date in production. I don't know that answer, but, you know, once we get this done, because it's, you know, been so long and this hasn't been taken care of, after this is completed, you know, we can get the city on a plan to replace X amount of computers per year, so it won't have to come to this again. We, you know, we can be prepared for this in the future instead of, you know, saying, "Hey, guys, this is an emergency and it has to happen now," unfortunately. We can try to prevent that from happening again.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, Chairwoman on Committee on Schools, can you check with the superintendents, see what their statuses, and share with us at one point?
Certainly.
You also have the floor, go ahead.
I do have, I had another quick question. So if, so we are getting new computers with Windows 10, so should Microsoft decide in the next six, eight, nine, 12 months not to continue patching Windows 10? We'd have to upgrade the Windows, we'd have to upgrade the software, but would we be able to continue using those new computers? What's the life, I guess, for the hardware?
Sure. I would say somewhere between three and five years is the average lifetime of hardware. If that did happen, now, Microsoft doesn't even have a more updated operating system out there, so I can't imagine it would ever happen in the next year. You know, usually that's a three-year process or so, but if for some reason that did happen, that shelf life is probably three to five years, where we could, you know, purchase just the software to upgrade instead of all the equipment as well.
And what's the shelf life for the server?
I would say probably somewhere between about five years or so.
Okay, all righty, thank you.
Okay, we do have one representative of the committee in the audience from the library, and also we have the city clerk. While the clerk's here, I don't know if you wanna say anything, weigh in on this, or if you have any questions directly for the counsel?
Hi. So I actually got to be in charge of the project for compiling the number and working with ClearCom directly for this, and I know it's a big number, and there's a lot of computers, and I want you guys to know, when I was actually doing this assessment, I talked to each department and the department heads individually when I was choosing which computers would work best, 'cause I know one computer doesn't fit all needs, especially depending on what you do as a job. So for example, library has a special request, and we made sure that we got computers that matched that, since the patrons and other people are gonna be using the computers. Police have a lot of special software, so they had special requests for hardware, so they have special computers that are gonna be purchased that would be necessary for their needs. And similarly, all the department heads in departments that have like high mapping, high data usage, anything that's really advanced, will be getting a more high-tech computer that would last a longer period of time, instead of just a blanketed, everybody gets the same thing that might fail or become a problem later on. If you have any questions whatsoever about the breakdown or anything, I have all that 'cause I compiled an entire spreadsheet for it, so I know exactly who is getting what, when, and how. And thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselors have any questions for the clerk? If not, gentlemen, any closing remarks?
I don't. Yeah, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming down tonight, we appreciate it. This meeting's closed, thank you.
This is a hearing before the Leominster City Council, 5-20, National Grid in Verizon, New England, request to install one jointly owned pole and remove one jointly owned pole on Hall Street, beginning at a point approximately 265 feet west of the center line of the intersection of West Street, and continuing approximately 15 feet in the north direction. Is there, I know there's somebody here from National Grid to speak on it? If you'd like to go to the microphone, please, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Tavali Mola. I work as a design engineer in the Worcester office of National Grid.
Mr. President, do you have a question on that?
Oh, you want to just fill us in on it?
Okay, apparently there was a job where a pole was set already prior to having a petition hearing. This was, the way that this happened was in no disrespect to the procedure of having a petition hearing, no disrespect to anybody in the city of Leominster. The pole originally was supposed to be set three feet away from where it originally is standing. Those are within the guidelines that you do not need to have a petition hearing. Now, I've worked in many departments inside of National Grid, I've been there for 27 years. I've also worked in a bucket. Now, the crew was saying that it was minimum approach distances and safety concerns that they had, to where they had to place the pole six feet away from where it was three feet more than where it was supposed to be set. Sometimes, when you're up in that bucket, it's just too dangerous for them to do their job without having to change things. Unfortunately, the engineer and the designer is not on every single job. Usually, when the work is done, we're not even there, they just do the work that they need to do, and that is why this happened. So that now, after the pole is already in, where it's supposed, where in the ground and set, I'm here for the petition hearing. So I just do really wanna apologize, and we did not mean any disrespect to the process of putting a pole in.
Thank you. I'm gonna defer to the council president, it's his word.
That's pretty much the story that I received from National Grid. I appreciate you coming down here tonight, ma'am. One of the things that sparked this was there was a line that was actually secured on private property, and the resident had no idea it was going there, so that has been moved as well, correct?
Yes, that was the down guy, which anchors the pole, which they did remove.
Okay, so with all due respect to National Grid, if we did not initiate action steps, National Grid was not coming to the city to share any of this information with us. So do you have a policy in place at National Grid that from now on, when you have an emergency situation, which we understand, that you can at least have the respect to come to the council or to the city to let them know you had to do this, and then submit the petition accordingly? Because quite frankly, the people in National Grid in the office that I spoke to locally had no idea this had happened until we visited the site.
Yeah, I am not aware of any present policy that is in existence as of right now. I will speak with Scott Farah and find out what they are going to do so that this will never happen again.
Well, I don't want you to miss the point. With all due respect, I appreciate the situation you were in when you had, when the team had to make the decision to move the pole three more feet. That's their call, I respect that, especially since you raised the point of an emergency type of a nature. The challenge is for National Grid, once you have qualified the fact that you have breached the local ordinance and how this plays out, and also mass general law, that you come forward to let us know you had to do it this way. And then the second part would be, as far as going onto people's property to be able to do an anchor line, I don't think that, you know, it takes much to be, to bang on the door and ask permission to go on their property. That was on their property. So I have no idea how National Grid has the right to do that, but when I went up, cable wires were dangling from the line, within reach of a child, tree limbs were all over the front lawn and sidewalk that were left, and the anchor line was in place. So we just wanna make sure that we have a friendly relationship where the poles go in between National Grid and the neighborhood.
I will make a phone call tomorrow to Scott Farah, explaining to him, I'll write all this down that you have just spoken about, and we will implement something so that this does not happen again.
Thank you.
I understand, I think that the line department, they're not aware of all of the background paperwork and the ordinances of towns. The only thing they do is they get their job, and they go out and they try to do it as safely as possible. There should never be wire put on personal property, either, ever. So I am not aware of the fact...
Or tree limbs left on the sidewalk and in the road.
Correct, correct.
And a cable wire that you disconnected, that you left dangling for a little six-year-old to grab onto.
Okay, I was not aware of any of those circumstances, but nothing...
This is an isolated incident, but I think as far as being the city council president at this time, and also the ward council where this actually happened, we respect the position you're in, but just be respectful to the neighborhood that you're working in. That's all I ask.
Absolutely, I'm in agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, is there any other councilors that have any questions regarding this poll?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that has any opinion on 5-20? Any affirmative or the negative? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or opposition 5-20? If not, Mr. President, I declare the hearing closed.
Okay, just for point of information, I wanna thank National Grid for resolving this in a timely fashion. The poll's been up for approximately two and a half to three months now. Okay, thank you.
And we appreciate her coming down as well, and for taking the message back.
Thank you. Claire, which ones did you want to address? Claire, Counselor Frida, which ones did you want to move up?
The form is now open. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council is not, will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We do not have anyone that has signed up for the public forum, but I'll yield the floor to the audience. If anyone would like to address the council? Yes, ma'am? If you'd come right to the microphone again and state your name and address and what you would like to speak on, please.
My name is Fran Basset. I live at 36 Barry Lane, and I'd like...
Good evening.
I'm sorry?
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good. I'd like to address 6-20. It's on page three of my copy, anyway. Came to our attention a couple of years ago that we live on a street that's never been approved by the city of Leominster. None of the people that live on our street were aware of that either, whether they were original homeowners, which we are not, but we have lived there for 30 years now. We'd like to petition your group to please respectfully consider making this an approved city street. My personal concern is, in the event that there's a problem with the water or the sewer line in the city, it's, you know, we pay for that, we pay our taxes and pay them in a timely manner, and I'd like to have knowledge that this, this street could possibly become an approved street so that we wouldn't be entitled to all the benefits of approved streets in the city.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Miller. I live at 5J Avenue, Leominster, and I'd like to address, I believe it's 10-20, which is in the same regard of a street that I've lived on for the past 34 years, paid my taxes regularly, on time, I hope. And can't say that the city hasn't serviced the street as far as plowing and things like that, but in 34 years, I've never seen the street paved. It has been dug up a number of times and patched, but presently, I have a pretty large hole in front of a manhole cover that the plows hit every time they come through, and it sounds like a gun going off, every single time. But as our former speaker said, I'd like to see that I've been paying my taxes and that I thought I was on an approved street, and I'd like to see it approved by the city and moved over into the accepted byways.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other member of the audience like to address the council? Second time, third and final call. If not, the public forum is closed. We'll go into session at 7 o'clock. Ladies and gentlemen, the regular scheduled meeting for October 15, 2019 is now in session. Please stand and join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin the evening with a roll call vote of the honorable members of the council, beginning with Council Cormier.
Present.
Council Bonanza.
Present.
Council Feckley.
Present.
Council Schellephal Zephyr.
Present.
Council Dombrowski.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
Thank you. Seven members are present this evening, Madam Clerk. Is the chairwoman of records ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. I have the minutes of August 26th, September 9th, and September 23rd. And except for some very minor edits, which I will mention to the city clerk, I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. Great job. Any questions on the minutes? So moved. We now move on to communications from the mayor, beginning with Communication 28.
C-28, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that Kevin I, Iana Kohn be exempt from the provisions of Master General Law, Chapter 268A, 20B, Conflict of Interest.
Communication 28 is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you, Madam Chair, regular course. We now move on to orders, beginning with Communication 29. This is an emergency preamble. The first thing we would do is take it as an emergency preamble. All those in favor of accepting it, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. It is now before the council, Communication 29. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, C-29, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $308,000 to the ITTF expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We heard earlier this evening during an informational session, the city IT contractor, Clearcom, was, uh, here, uh, explaining to us, uh, how, uh, some of the current operating systems used by the city, namely Windows 7, uh, will no longer be supported as of January 14th, 2020, which would make the city vulnerable to a number of, um, threats, uh, cyber threats. Um, and all of this equipment needs to be replaced. Uh, there were some 172 computers and a number of servers that are included in this $308,000, uh, figure. Um, it'd be my position, Mr. President, based on the urgency of the situation and the need of the upgrade, that, uh, I would support. C-29, ask you to check with the, uh, remaining member of my committee present this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to Council Cormier?
I totally agree.
Thank you. Please requalify, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unanimous position of finance is to grant C-29.
Councilor, the recommendation read for granting Communication 29. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing. Communication 29 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $308,000 be appropriated to the ITTF expense account, same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the council, sir, of the recommendation. Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll be ratifying that vote on October 28th. Thank you. And now move on to Communication 30, Madam Clerk.
C-30, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $60,000 to various accounts as listed below, same amount to be raised by fiscal year 2020 revenue regarding expenses related to fiscal year 2019 collective bargaining agreement. Collective bargaining sick leave buyback, $40,000. Collective bargaining expenses, $14,887. Health salary and wages, $2,766. Economic development salary and wages, $2,347 for a grand total of $60,000.
Thank you. Communication 30 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 30. Uh, Council Frida, are you the floor to you?
Um, could we, through the chair?
Yes.
Finance Chair, can we get a breakdown of exactly what this is? Is this part of the whole, um, City Hall, um, conversation that's going on about some getting step increases, some getting raises?
I will, um, I will investigate and I'll-
We can find out what it is.
Be prepared to report to you on the 28th of October.
All set?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now move on to Communication 31. We have this under suspension of rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules to accept it, please indicate by, uh, in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of seven to nothing, the rules have been suspended. I yield the floor to the chairman of finance.
Um, C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $221,100 to the fire department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the central fire station rear energy reconstruction. This is the first time on the calendar, regular course, Mr. President, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 31. Thank you. We now move on to Petition 12 dash 20. The chairman of city property is not here this evening. I believe Councilor Bonanza.
Yeah.
You can handle this. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, 12 dash 20, Richard M. Marchand, Festival Facilitator, request the closure of the following streets from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on Saturday, September 26, 2020, with a rain date of, I believe that's the typo, should be, uh, well, no, maybe not, rain date of Saturday, October 3rd, 2020. Um, this, uh, the streets involved are West Street from School Street to Main Street, Park Street from West Street intersection in the Church Street vicinity to Main Street, the City Hall parking lot, the city parking lot adjacent to City Hall located off West Street, the city parking lot, certain defined spaces located between the First Baptist Church and First Church Unitarian for handicapped parking, Church Street from Merrimack to West Street. This section of Church Street to be closed off is still available with an altered egress pattern for public safety vehicles and businesses. This is the first time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on 12:20. Now move on to 13 dash 20.
13 dash 20, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., Union Street, request to install one jointly owned pole on Union Street, beginning at a point approximately 250 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Theodore Drive and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northern direction. Install new pole number 98 dash 50 at entrance of driveway to 827 Union Street to service new pole line running up driveway and remove backyard poles from house number 821 that service number 827.
13 dash 20 is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course. And we need to vote on a hearing for 10:28 at 6:40.
Councilor, the recommendation for regular course on 13:20. We need to establish a hearing date for the 20th of October at 6:40 p.m. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing date?
I'll be abstaining, Mr. President, as usual.
Thank you.
Partially on my employer.
On the record.
Thank you.
Councilor David Cormier, thank you. All those in favor of establishing the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to nothing, the hearing date's been established. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We now have matters before the city council, and there's been a request to move a couple of legal affairs items to the front by Council Frida, correct? Council Frida, we have six, uh, six dash 20. That was one of them, six dash 20?
Yeah, we don't, we, okay.
We can deal with it right now.
Six twenty.
And what was the other one? Uh, 10:20?
Six twenty and 10:20.
Okay, very good. If there's no objection from the Legal Affairs Committee on that? Okay, I'll yield the floor to the chairman of Legal Affairs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Petition six dash 20, Joseph Basset intend registered voters to accept Barry Lane as a street in the city of Lemonster. Uh, we did get a referral from the planning board director, basically referring us to, uh, some correspondence from the city solicitor. Uh, and also, before I get into that, we also, um, got a couple of emails from the DPW, John Roseberry, who reminded us that the council had voted to accept this, I think back in 2001, long before any of us were on the council. Um, maybe not, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Were you on the council in 2001?
I support it.
Oh, you were, okay. All right. Uh, but the long and short of it is, um, if we do accept it, it will end up back in the mayor's office because the city still needs to acquire title, uh, to the roadways and also, um, the sewer easement. Uh, and then there's two ways to do that. You can have the owner sign deeds, or you can acquire it by eminent domain. I think the popular choice is to do it by eminent domain because there's a lot less headaches. Uh, so having said all that, um, I don't, I have no problem personally supporting this and voting for this, um, a second time. Uh, you know, perhaps it'll, um, spur some action to, to get this finally accepted. So my recommendation is to grant Petition six dash 20 and, uh, ask you to hold my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
I support it.
Thank you, Councilor. Third member, Council Bonanza.
I will support it as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant Petition six dash 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Petition six dash 20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Council Cormier.
Yea.
Council Bonanza.
Yea.
Council Feckley.
Yea.
Council Schellephal Zephyr.
Yea.
Council Dombrowski.
Yea.
Council Frida.
Yea.
I shall record as yea by a vote of seven to nothing. Six dash 20 has been granted. Thank you. We now move on to 10 dash 20 on page five. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Uh, I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Petition 10 dash 20, Jeffrey Miller, and 10 registered voters request to accept J Avenue as a street in the city of Lemonster. Uh, Mr. President, this is the exact same scenario as Petition six dash 20. Uh, the facts are substantially similar. My recommendation is to grant Petition 10 dash, 10 dash 20. I'd ask you to hold my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll yield the floor to the clerk, Council Frida.
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Council Bonanza.
I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant Petition 10 dash 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor, the recommendation read to grant Petition 10 dash 20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Council Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just, I just want to make one thing sort of clear with the public that in case, you know, anybody isn't aware, that this isn't like magic, like the street isn't accepted because we voted on it. Because a lot of people think that, you know, that it's- manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the rules have been suspended. Are you of the floor to the Chairman of Finance?
C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $221,100 to the Fire Department capital outlay expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. This is regarding the central fire station rear energy reconstruction. This is the first time on the calendar. Regular course, Mr. President, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on Communication 31. Thank you. We'll now move on to Petition 12-20. The Chairman of City Property is not here this evening. I believe Counselor Bonanza?
Yeah.
You can handle this. Thank you.
Sure. 12-20, Richard M. Marchand, Festival Facilitator, request the closure of the following streets from 5:30 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on Saturday, September 26, 2020, with a rain date of, I believe that's the typo, should be, well, no, maybe not, rain date of Saturday, October 3, 2020. This, the streets involved are West Street from School Street to Main Street, Park Street from West Street intersection in the Church Street vicinity to Main Street, the City Hall parking lot, the city parking lot adjacent to City Hall located off West Street, the city parking lot, certain defined spaces located between the First Baptist Church and First Church Unitarian for handicap parking, Church Street from Merrimack to West Street. This section of Church Street to be closed off is still available with an altered egress pattern for public safety vehicles and businesses. This is the first time on the calendar, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regular course on 12-20. Now move on to 13-20.
13-20, National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., Union Street, request to install one jointly owned pole on Union Street beginning at a point approximately 250 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Theodore Drive and continuing approximately 20 feet in a northern direction. Install new pole number 98-50 at entrance of driveway to 827 Union Street to service new pole line running up driveway and remove backyard poles from house number 821 that service number 827.
13-20 is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President. Regular course, and we need to vote on a hearing for 10:28 at 6:40.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation for regular course on 13-20, we need to establish a hearing date for the 20th of October at 6:40 p.m. in the council chambers. Are there any questions on the hearing date?
I'll be abstaining, Mr. President, as usual, partially owned by my employer.
Thank you. Counselor David Cormier, thank you. All those in favor of establishing the hearing date, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of six to nothing, the hearing date's been established. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. We now have matters before the City Council, and there's been a request to move a couple of legal affairs items to the front by Counselor Frieda, correct? Counselor Frieda, we have 6-20. That was one of them, 6-20?
Yeah, we don't, we, okay.
We can deal with it right now.
620.
And what was the other one, 1020?
620 and 1020.
Okay, very good. If there's no objection from the Legal Affairs Committee on that? Okay, are you of the floor to the Chairman of Legal Affairs?
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition 6-20, Joseph Bassett intend registered voters to accept Berry Lane as a street in the city of Leominster. We did get a referral from the Planning Board Director, basically referring us to some correspondence from the city solicitor. And also, before I get into that, we also got a couple of emails from the DPW, John Roseberry, who reminded us that the council had voted to accept this, I think back in 2001, long before any of us were on the council. Maybe not, I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Were you on the council in 2001?
I support it.
Oh, you were, okay. All right. But the long and short of it is, if we do accept it, it will end up back in the mayor's office because the city still needs to acquire title to the roadways and also the sewer easement. And then there's two ways to do that. You can have the owner assign deeds, or you can acquire it by eminent domain. I think the popular choice is to do it by eminent domain because there's a lot less headaches. So having said all that, I don't, I have no problem personally supporting this and voting for this a second time. You know, perhaps it'll spur some action to get this finally accepted. So my recommendation is to grant Petition 6-20 and ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you of the floor to the Clerk? Counselor Frieda?
I support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Third member, Counselor Bonanza?
I will support it as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to grant Petition 6-20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Petition 6-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, this would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Schellephal Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Frieda?
Yea.
I shall record as yea by a vote of seven to nothing. 6-20 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to 10-20 on page five. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Petition 10-20, Jeffrey Miller and 10 registered voters request to accept J. Avenue as a street in the city of Leominster. Mr. President, this is the exact same scenario as Petition 6-20. The facts are substantially similar. My recommendation is to grant Petition 10-20. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you of the floor to the Clerk? Counselor Frieda?
I agree.
Thank you. Third member, Counselor Bonanza?
I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant Petition 10-20.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Petition 10-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just, I just want to make one thing sort of clear with the public that in case, you know, anybody isn't aware, that this isn't like magic, like the street isn't accepted because we voted on it. Because a lot of people think that, you know, that it's, we vote on it and it's, it's, it's done. Because otherwise, we're going to have 50 people coming down here with 50 different streets. You know, I guess what we're doing is solidifying the vote, you know, that was taken in 2001 and sort of bringing this to the mayor's attention that it's more of a, these two streets are more of a priority, something we'd like him to work on as a priority. But at the end of the day, that's who's going to decide when and if any or all of the unaccepted streets in the city are accepted. Currently, we have two that were accepted last year. Officially, the paperwork was recorded with the registered deeds in March. Those two streets are now being repaved. So we've made progress, but, you know, it's going to be very slow, and I just want people to understand that, you know, it's, we don't, we don't wave a magic wand here and take a vote, and it's just the street is now a public street. There's still a lot of work to do to get it to that, to that point, a lot of, a lot of legal work.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cormier. Any other comments or questions on the floor? Counselor Frieda?
I just think it's important to note, these streets were all in a part of a plan back in 1965, when Debbie and Beth were built. I think it was in the 80s, 70s, when came back with, to continue, finish the plan with Jay and Barry. There's not a lot of work to be done. It was just a matter of the plans being done. It just had to get, accept the deeds transferred to accept it. The plan was done accordingly, so I don't see a reason why we shouldn't be supporting it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the floor? If not, the recommendation is to grant 10-20. This would be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Bonanza?
Yea.
Counselor Feckley?
Yea.
Counselor Schellephal Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski?
Yea.
Counselor Frieda?
Yea.
I shall record as yea by a vote of seven to nothing. 10-20 has been granted. Thank you very much. Anything else under order, out of order that we need to take?
Thank you.
Good, you're welcome. Okay, we're now going to move back to page three. Matters before the City Council. We'll begin with a financial report. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We began the fiscal year on July 1st of 2019 with a balance in our stabilization account of $19,890,850. Since that time, we've had some additions and subtractions. We've earned some interest on that, an amount of $85,909. And we have approved either previously or have on our agenda for action $2,611,401 worth of communications from the mayor, leaving a balance of $17,365,359.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move on to Communication 25. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-25, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $28,000 be made to the emergency management expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We have a request from the mayor backed up by a letter from Ms. LeBlank, our emergency management director, very detailed. Apparently, the city has been getting a big bang for its buck on command vehicles down at OEM. The last two directors had vehicles that were in service for 15 years, believe it or not, each. This is, so it's, the current command vehicle is out of service due to rust and mechanical failure, needs to be replaced. Mr. LeBlank is proposing to replace it with a 2020 Explorer. Total build out for the vehicle is $43,629. And again, the director did a nice job by getting us a grant for $15,500, and thus the $28,000 request. I would support this, and I'd ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you of the floor to Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 25. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, thank you for writing the grant. That's awesome. That's a big help. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, Communication 25 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $28,000 be appropriated to the emergency management expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation. Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now move on to Communication 26. Are you ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-26, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $23,200 be made to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. The mayor sent us a letter with some backup from the Director of Digital Learning, Steve Momoni. This is related to upgrades and repairs to the phone system, particularly at Northwest School. Apparently, there's some critical components of that phone system that have been lost recently, which hampers communication at the school. These are, of course, very necessary and need to be replaced. This is, there is an ongoing process, apparently according to Mr. Momoni, addressing all of these issues. But this is of some urgency, and it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-26, and I would ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you of the floor to Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Yes, the unanimous recommendation of Finance is to grant C-26.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, that recommendation read. Again, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the communication has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $23,200 be appropriated to the school department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, the counsel's heard a favorable recommendation on Communication 26. Are there any final comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the order's been adopted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Communication 27.
C-27, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested an appropriation of $8,000 be made to the police department expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. You might recall, councilors and the public, that the chief was here recently talking about some of the video surveillance in the city and its use in law enforcement, modern law enforcement. This communication is to install two cameras in the Carter Park area, and according to the chief and his experience, there is a, that is one of the most pressing, pressing needs in terms of these type of security equipment. It would be my position to grant C-27, Mr. President. I'd ask you to check with the other member of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you of the floor to Counselor Cormier?
I also agree.
Thank you. Please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant C-27.
Counselor, sir, the recommendation read to grant Communication 27. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the communication's been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $8,000 be appropriated to the police department expense account, move for the adoption, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read. Are there any comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, the order's been adopted on our Communication 27. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now move on to Legal Affairs. We'll begin with 7-20. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 7-20, Gail P. Feckley, request to amend Section 13-77 stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for northbound traffic on Dingly Street at Fairview Street. My understanding is we're still pending a referral from the traffic agent? Is that correct?
Right.
At this point, if you don't mind, Mr. President, I could refer this to the petitioner.
Sure, please.
Counselor Feckley.
Yes, thank you. So I was approached by some constituents in that area regarding stop sign issues here, but I would like to hear from the traffic agent first, the reasoning behind. I think I know the reasoning behind. I think it's a cutoff for people trying to avoid the light at Route 13 and the Johnny Appleseed school traffic. But I would like to wait for the, for the traffic agent report.
Okay, all right. And you have my word, we'll expedite that recommendation by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor?
Given the outstanding referral, the recommend, my recommendation would be further time. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Counselor Frieda?
I support that.
Counselor Bonanza?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, thank you. Further time is the recommendation on 7-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven, seven to nothing, further time has been awarded to 7-20. Mr. Chairman, 8-20, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 8-20, Gail P. Feckley, request to amend Section 13-77 stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding a stop sign for southbound traffic on Dingly Street at Tolman Avenue. This is the same as the preceding petition. We are awaiting the referral from the traffic agent, so I would ask for further time. Ask you to poll the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselor Frieda?
I agree.
Counselor Bonanza?
I'm in accord.
Thank you. Further time has been the recommendation on 8-20. Counselor Feckley, you all set with that?
I am, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. All those in favor of the recommendation for further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. And again, we'll expedite the recommendation on that. We'll now move on to 9-20. Are you ready to report, Mr. Chairman?
I am, Mr. President. Petition 9-20, Michael Goldman, Police Chief, request to delete Section 13-26 of the revised ordinance for the city of Leominster and insert a new Section 13-26 as follows. A, whenever the mayor or the mayor's designee declares a snow emergency exists in the city in regard to snow plowing or snow removal by giving at least six hours' notice, it shall be unlawful for the owner, operator, or person in charge of any vehicle other than one acting in an emergency to park such vehicle or permit or suffer the same to be parked on any public street in this city for the duration of the emergency. A snow emergency so declared shall continue for a 48-hour period, which may be extended by the mayor or his or her designee as circumstances require. During said snow emergency, the Director of Public Works shall conduct snow plowing removal and sand and salt operations. B, the mayor or the mayor's designee may remove the restrictions imposed in any snow emergency for areas of the city as they become cleared. C, the Director of Public Works shall notify the Leominster Police Department, activate code red, and announce the snow emergency through TV, radio, newspaper, and city social media outlets and as many other public channels as the Director deems necessary. D, the provision of this section shall not apply to handicap parking areas located in residential zones. E, any vehicle found in violation, violation of this section may be removed to a convenient place under the direction of any officer of the police department, and the owner of the vehicle so removed or towed away shall be liable to the cost of such removal and storage. We did get a referral back from the police chief in favor of, of granting this, this ordinance. We are awaiting referrals from the mayor and the DPW, so my recommendation at this time is to give this further time.
Okay. The recommendation is further time. Are there any comments or questions on the floor?
If, if I.
Counselor Cormier, go ahead.
If I may, I, I know we just amended this, you know, a few years ago. So I guess, I don't know if we should have the police chief down here to give us some kind of an explanation as to what was wrong with what we imposed a few years ago and what we're, and compare it to what we're doing now. I mean, this costs us a lot of time and money to implement, and if we're doing it again, I want to make sure we're, we're sort of doing it right. You know, I know it's hard to compare this to other cities and towns because other cities and towns have a totally different dynamic, you know? You can't compare this to Boston because they're much more densely populated, you know, or, or one of the communities in the Boston area, you know, Chelsea or Somerville or anything like that. And you certainly can't, you know, compare us to Lancaster where, you know, there's plenty of parking for people that can park off-street. So, you know, we need to, we need to find a solution that's going to work. And I kind of want an explanation on, on this before we change this again, because it gets very confusing for the public, too, to understand what they actually need to do in the winter when we're changing it every other winter. So I'm not voting to change anything until I have a good explanation as to what the problems were with the last one, and I have assurance that there aren't going to be problems with this one.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a problem bringing the police chief down.
Counselor Bonanza?
Hey, the problem's the same with the new one as with the old one. It's people, how do people get notice?
Right.
You know, I mean, we use the reverse 911 system, which is helpful, but not everybody's on it. And it's, most people today, especially younger people, don't have landlines. And if their cell phone isn't registered in that system, they're not getting notice. We've all got constituent calls on this. People don't understand it. And I don't think people can understand the new one any better than they understood the old one. I guess the difference between the two is the new one's a little more flexible in terms of when, when it can be called. But the, the inherent problem with all of this is, you know, we don't need this when it's not snowing, but we need it when it's snowing. The old days used to, it used to be illegal to park, right, from April to November, or November to April? And that was easy to understand, everybody knew it. But now we're trying to have the best of both worlds, and if anybody's got a bright idea of how everybody in the city's going to get notice, I know this one says newspaper. I don't know if newspapers is going to cover every storm and tell, as a public service to the city of Leominster, or they're going to ask for advertising revenue. So that's the issue with it. I think having the, the chief down here isn't a bad idea. I mean, maybe we can toss it around and develop, maybe somebody can come up with a brainstorm, but that's the problem with it.
Any other councils wish to weigh in on this? Okay, so I'm going to yield the floor back to you for the recommendation again?
Recommendation is further time, and we can take up a vote under old business to have the chief come down.
Okay, very good. Counselors, sir, the recommendation read for further time on 9-20. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of six to one?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. By a vote of seven to nothing, further time has been awarded. And we'll take that vote up near the end of the meeting. Thank you. We'll now move on to 11-20. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Petition 11-20, Claire M. Frida requests to amend Section 13-77 stop signs of the Leominster Municipal Code by adding three stop signs for the following locations. Berry Lane at the intersection of Berry Lane and Debbie Drive, Berry Lane at the intersection of Berry Lane and Beth Avenue, J. Avenue at the intersection of J. Avenue and Debbie Drive. Mr. President, we are waiting for a referral from the traffic agent. I'd ask your indulgence if we could hear from the petitioner.
Hey, Counselor Frida, are you the floor?
Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, you all set?
The recommendation would be further time pending the referral from the traffic agent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read for further time on 11-20. Are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, further time has been awarded. Thank you. We'll now move on to Public Service, 5-20. Is the chairwoman ready to report?
Public Service, 5-20, National Grid in Verizon, New England, request to install one jointly home pole, remove one jointly home pole on Hall Street, beginning at a point approximately 265 feet west of the central line of the intersection of West Street and continuing approximately 15 feet in the north direction. We had a hearing this evening, and a thank you to the representative from National Grid for explaining this. My recommendation would be to grant. Go to other members of my committee.
Your committee's not here tonight.
I'm sorry?
So, you're, you're doing a solo tonight.
It's small, I guess my vote counts.
So, your, your vote is pretty significant.
My, my committee's recommendation is to grant.
I remember when I had city property for Pier 21, and I was the only voter, it was a nightmare. Okay, all right, thank you. And your recommendation is counsel?
To grant.
Thank you. Counselors heard the recommendation read to grant 5-20. Are there any comments or questions on the floor? Counselor David Cormier.
As usual, Mr. President, I have to abstain. This piece of equipment is partially owned by my employer.
Thank you, duly noted. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of six to nothing, 5-20 has been granted. Thank you. We'll now move on to new business. We have, let's see here, who was this before?
Uh, this is David. One, two, three, four.
Okay, so we do have something listed here. It's not in the committee. I'm going to yield the floor to, I'm going to ask the clerk to read it, and then Counselor Cormier, if you need to weigh in on this, you'll have the floor. Okay, go ahead.
David R. Cormier, Ward Street Councilor, requests that a vote be taken by the Leominster City Council to have John Roseberry, the chairman of the planning board, and if he chooses, the planning director and/or designees attend the next meeting of the city council on October 28, 2019 regarding the partial release of a certain bond on a certain subdivision in January 2019 without the city council being petitioned for street acceptance under the subdivision regulations of the City of Leominster as stated in Section 14 of the regulations.
Thank you. Are you the floor to Counselor Cormier? If you have any clarification on that, you'd like to share?
Thank you very much. Without getting into a lot of discussion on it, I, I really don't have
Okay.
... a lot of other things to say
Okay.
... other than the fact that I think what I petitioned is pretty self-explanatory, and it would result in another unaccepted street, which we will talk about next week.
Okay, very good. Counselors heard the request to take a vote, again, to request the planning director or a designee to attend along with the, the chairman or chairwoman of the planning board as well, and we also have the John Roseberry from the Engineering Department of the DPW as well. All those in favor of the recommendation, please indicate. Counselor Frida.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm having trouble hearing tonight, so you may have said it. I'm not comfortable voting on this without knowing what we're talking about.
Okay, well, it's a blank, it's a blank request. We won't find out what we're talking about until we come to the meeting at that point.
So, why would we refer to this as a partial release of a certain bond of a certain subdivision?
Well, this is, this is just a snapshot clarification of why he wishes them to come down and discuss it, that's all. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
And, and it's on file in the planning director's office?
Right.
There's documents in there?
Yeah, I'm not, this, it's not transparent to me to, to have those
Well, that's why we're going to have a discussion about it.
Those comments in there without the public knowing what we're talking about.
We can't talk about it until we vote on it.
I, I get that.
And we can't bring it before us until we bring the people down here who are directly affected by it
I understand that.
From a legal standpoint. So, if you're not comfortable with it and you wish to vote down on it, that's fine. Okay? Sorry about that. All those in favor of the recommendation, or the request to bring down the three people or more involved in the request, please indicate in the usual manner. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed, one. By a vote of six to one, we're going to set that up for the very next meeting. Okay? Thank you. Okay, we now have old business. We have a second reading of the ordinance, Communication 10. Is the Chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Communication 10, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, requests that the Cross Connection Control Ordinance, Chapter 17, Section 1718, to be updated per the attached document. The adoption of this updated ordinance will help with the safety preservation of the water quality within the City of Leominster Water Distribution System, which is a continuous goal of the Department of Public Works. For the record, I'd note that the entire ordinance was read
Right.
... at the first reading of the ordinance and is on file at the city clerk's office. Just a, a quick summary, this, this proposed ordinance deals with cross connections, which is when potable drinking water piping connects to various plumbing fixtures or water utilizing equipment. If it's not properly protected, contamination can result, particularly when a backflow event occurs. What this is, what this proposed ordinance is doing is requiring all cross connections to have a suitable backflow prevention device, and it's also updating the permitting in surveying and inspection requirements to comply with DEP's regulations. It was passed, it was adopt, the first reading of the ordinance was adopted. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you the floor to the second member, Counselor Frida?
I support it.
Thank you. Third member, Counselor Bonanza.
I support it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, please requalify.
Unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counselors heard the recommendation read to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. This will require two-thirds vote of the entire council in order for it to pass. Will be, are there any questions or comments on the floor? If not, will be, this will be a roll call vote, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
I'm going to, I'm going to hold the vote for one second. I'm going to yield the floor to Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, just to make sure you're okay with voting on this. I'm not sure if you are or not. You'd have to, you'd have to make that qualification.
I believe I am.
Okay, good.
I do.
That's great, because we need two-thirds vote, so we need your vote tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President, don't we only need six votes? Supermajority?
Says right here, two-thirds vote for the second reading of the
Two thirds be six.
Well, we need six. Okay, all right, that's right, that's right.
I think I'm fine.
Okay, good, okay, we're good. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, you good?
I am.
Okay, perfect. We're going to begin again. This will be to grant Communication 10, beginning with Counselor David Cormier.
Yea.
The second reading. Counselor Bonanza.
Yea.
Counselor Feckley.
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Counselor Dobrowski.
Yea.
Counselor Frida.
Yea.
I shall record yea by a vote of seven to nothing. The second reading has been adopted. Thank you very much.
I think, Mr. President, all those little leaguers you coach might want to recalculate their batting averages.
You know, because I sit here, I can't come back on that, but you know, I'm thinking of something, so we'll have a discussion. But that was a really good point, though, Counselor.
One of your future meetings.
Okay, that's great. All right, just one other item under old business. I just want to go back to Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. I hate giving you an assignment, but I think it's imperative that we, we get on top of that with the superintendent tomorrow, and if, when you get the email, if you could just share with all of us just to make sure they're all set. Yes?
I was actually going to bring that up because during one of our breaks while we were waiting for the meeting to start
Yeah.
... I did contact the superintendent.
Okay.
And
That's great.
She got back to me immediately and said that they are absolutely aware of the problem. They are getting people, any, any and everyone who was using Windows 7 in the school department is being transitioned off of Windows 7. So, they're aware of the problem, they're working very, very diligently and closely with their own IT department, and they're on it.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's a quick reply.
It was.
That's great.
There you go.
Mr. President?
What's that?
I want to
Yeah, John, you have one vote, right? Correct? You have a recommendation to bring someone down?
Yes, I just wanted to, on petition, it's petition 9-20, if we could vote to bring the police chief down.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselors heard their recommendation. Are there any questions on it? If not, all those in favor to bring the chief down on petition 9-20, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed by a vote of seven to nothing, we'll request the chief to come down at his, hopefully, the next meeting because snow's going to be here before we know it.
Yep.
It's just hard to believe it. Counselor Cormier?
Yeah, if I may, along the same lines of petition 11-20, I would like to ask the Chairman of Legal Affairs if he could look into the Legal Affairs folder, the table folder. There is a petition in there for J. Ave at Beth Avenue. It's been, it's been tabled for a while because there was an issue with, you know, the problem is, is J. Ave is not accepted, but it's intercepting an accepted street, so I just want to see if we can potentially take that off the table for action and see if we need to talk about it. There's already a stop sign there. There's just no ordinance for it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Let me look into that.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, that's it for, oh, so, I'm sorry, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is just quick. I had a constituent ask me last week for an update on the police station, so through the chair to Counselor Frida, who sits on that committee, do you have any news on the schedule for the police station? I think people were expecting
You're talking about the police station?
The police station.
Police station, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Can you prepare that for the next meeting and give a report on it, a formal report?
Sure, there's not, not a lot to report, but
Well, good, give us a quick status, go ahead. Just give us a status. That's a good question.
We had a meeting, it was basically an introduction for the committee
Okay.
... to meet with the, the project manager for us. And the next, I mean, it was a very short meeting. The next step, they'll be putting everything together, and Greg Chapdellane with, with the bids to move forward to get the architect on board. So, that's going to take a few months to put all that together, but that's the next step.
How about demolition of the existing school? The demolition, is that ready to start?
That's, they're just waiting, it should be done by the end of the month.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
That's great, thank you. Great question, thanks. Okay, we're now going to move on to community calendar. A couple of things. First of all, I just got, I received the notification from the veterans about Veterans Day, and we have November 11th, and we'll be meeting in Monument Square at 10:30 with the veterans. At 11 o'clock, there'll be a formal program in the City Hall Auditorium, the John Tater Auditorium. So, we are all cordially invited, along with the public as well. So, again, mark your calendar, November 11th. This Saturday is homecoming for Leominster High School. And for the second year in a row, there's going to be events taking place down Doylefield